Like this year, we're spiking along the same lines we were a year ago, but the hospitalization rates are much lower. So that's a good sign. And so the vaccinations and, you know, measures for people are getting used to is are helping.
Okay. So as I, as I mentioned, today's agenda, we're going to meet with the community housing board. We're going to have a presentation on exactly where we are. The, as everyone knows, the governor signed the legislation approving the new transfer tax. Well, approving the legislation for the new transfer tax. We'll have to have a referendum in November for the voters to support it. And this will be a half percent, very similar to the 2% transfer tax with the new purchases going towards affordable housing. Had with the Senate, the Senate and the Assembly passed this two years ago, but the governor vetoed it the last two years. Had it been in place, the East End, the five East End towns would have $30 million already in the bank towards housing. So we missed out and on a time when this really would have been to our benefit, but we're going forward. We're we're going to do everything we can to make sure we get this passed. There are some features that we have to deal with and Chris and the board will discuss it with us. The governor has put in place, we have a community housing board that's made up of five members. The governor's legislation says we have to have a minimum of seven members, a maximum of 15. And they, she regulates what some of those members have to be. Some have to have professional, you know, be in housing profession, to be in contracting, be in banking, be advocates for housing. So we'll talk about that a little bit. There's also a bit where we have to come up with an actual housing plan, what we're going to do going forward before we have the legislation in place. So these are all things we're going to discuss now. Part of it's going to be, are we going to keep the committee? And then do this housing board or is that committee going to turn into the housing board? It's all things, you know, you guys are going to, you know, recommend to us how we're going to go forward with this. So Chris, I don't know how you want to, you know, how you're going to make the presentation, what you want to do. Okay. Why don't you come up here and Christina, do you have it?
Yes, I think so.
Just
This will be available Jerry on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say Christina can put that up on the website on the community to housing board page.
Okay. So, everyone. Thank you, everyone for coming. Really appreciate it. So as Jerry mentioned, this fall, the governor signed the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Act. And we're going to give, I'm going to give a little presentation here on it. Do next slide. One more. So one of the things that this is addressing is a healthy housing stock. And an important part of that is having a variety of housing types suitable to a range of incomes, providing housing availability for the entire community. Next. So the East End, due to its natural amenities proximity to New York City and the pandemic has had a surge in demand for seasonal homes. This demand has driven up the cost of homes dramatically and has resulted in a housing crisis for local residents. On that vein, I would like to say that I think that the pandemic certainly has exacerbated the situation, but it has not created the situation in any way. This has been a long time dialogue in the town and amongst residents of Shelter Islands. Next. So the high housing costs have made it impossible for island teachers, first responders, workers and other community members to live on Shelter Islands. Next. And availability of local housing for islanders has created ferry and roadway congestion and intolerable commutes for island workers. Many of us are well acquainted with the trade parade. That definitely has a real bearing on what's going on on Shelter Islands. And I think it's also important to consider, while it is pretty difficult to really measure the cost of this, you do have to consider that people coming from further away to work here, that there's an added cost to business just on travel time and that, that part of the equation. Next. So the legislation, the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Act. Next. The iconic Bay Community Housing Act, iconic Bay Region Community Housing Act provides funding and resources for Shelter Island to increase housing opportunities for residents. Next. Funding is derived from a half percent tax on property transfers. It raises the exemption from their entire real estate transfer from 250,000 to $400,000. And this is for properties $2 million or less. So the exemption, there's no change on a 2 million plus property. So we have a rough estimate there. So basically this year through about September, which is what we have the data to work off of. We would have this year made 660,000 if we had this in, in motion going this year. I do want to say that that's a rough estimate. I'm pretty good at math, but it's a little complicated.
Chris, just, just to give just to give an example of how crazy the market is right now. For the month of what I've just gotten, I told this numbers. We got a check for $465,000.
Yep.
For the month of it's the highest check. It's the biggest check we ever got for one month. Yeah.
Yeah, right. So and Peter McCracken, who is also on the housing board, he said that, you know, probably adding another $20 million in sales that still have not been processed. So that's 660,000 is, you know, whatever there.
Right.
Certainly it would be tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's no insignificant amount of money.
No.
One thing that I definitely want to emphasize on this is that this is a real estate transfer tax. This is not an ongoing tax to regular homeowners here on the island. Next. So the question is, is how can we use the funding from this? So there is financial assistance. We can set up a program for financial assistance for first time home buyers. We can help finance public private partnerships. The town itself can be involved in building community housing. It also allows for rehabilitation of existing structures and the purchasing of existing structures. So it can be new or previously constructed. And there are a few other things, whatever the, the law itself is really pretty extensive. The scope of what is allowed is broad. And it does also include things like potential funding to nonprofits that can help with counseling and stuff like that for guiding people in purchasing a home. Next. Okay, administrators, administrative requirements. Next. So in order for all of this to happen, a community has a community advisory board must be established. As Jerry was touching on, so it has to be made up of seven to 15 members. There has to be a representative from the construction, real estate and banking industries, as well as three representatives from local housing advocacy or human services organizations. So basically, as the community housing board has already been focused on working on housing, we thought it would be appropriate for us to solicit members for the advisory board. And that is really our big request here is to help in the process of figuring out those people. Ultimately, at the end of the day, it is a town board decision and the town board has to vote and approve whoever is going to be on the advisory board. In our meeting last week, we discussed with Amber, the, the role of the advisory board versus the community housing board. And I think that this opens up an opportunity to think about the scope of what the housing board should be taking on. But as stands in the legislation, it really seems like the advisory board is set up to create the housing plan and that's really it. So as far as a plan moving forward for the town board to think about, I think it is important to consider keeping the community housing board intact, but maybe expanding the role of what the housing board is. And that it works in conjunction with the advisory board while creating the housing plan. Next.
The community housing advocacy organizations and what do you see those as being?
Well, I think that it would be pretty fair to say that members of the community housing board probably fall into housing advocates. And on the human services or humanitarian, there are some other organizations on Shelter Island. One of the first ones that really comes to mind to me is the Lions Club. There is also the Shelter Island Housing Options Nonprofit, which is kind of in a bit of a lull, let's say. But there is a group of people that were together a couple of years ago, all working on trying to come up with some approaches to housing with that. But I would say that that is sort of like, maybe one of the funniest sort of like wording of the law to our particular situation. The four other East End towns all have organizations that kind of clearly fill that role and that's, that one's a little tougher for us.
It has to be residents.
Right. So it does have to be shelter on residence. So anyone that is not a shelter on resident could, you know, maybe be
Involved.
Involved. For example, Curtis Highsmith from the Southampton Housing Authority. Is a wealth of knowledge and very interested in helping us. But, you know, and to, in that same deal, I think it's, you know, it is important that it is shelter on residents that have a real understanding of what's going on in the island. It's good for us to use outside resources, but we're the ones that understand what our housing issue is. So in order for us to get any funds for this, a community housing plan must be developed by the advisory board. And that housing plan has to be adopted by the town board. In that, where you create a community housing fund and the town board holds and disperses the community housing funds. But most importantly, next November, 2022, there will be a public referendum on the adoption of the law. So in order for us to be able to do this, this has to pass in referendum. Next. So the community housing plan serves to provide an implementation plan and strategy for housing that meets the needs of the entire community. Next. So really this is based on smart growth principles. And it, in the legislation has, you know, this is a sort of brief summary of what it is. It actually is pretty extensive. But there's some important points on it. So we want to minimize economic, social and environmental impact of the new developments, including minimizing cost of infrastructure such as transportation, wastewater treatment, water, sewer, schools, recreation, and any potential loss of open space. We want to encourage development in areas where infrastructure is available and practical. At this point, we have a pretty limited scope of what that available infrastructure is. But as we are constantly talking about water and managing the water issue, especially in the center of town, I think we may be coming up with some infrastructure to consider in relation to this. Next. So other goals on the smart growth principles are to preserve and protect natural resources as well as historical and archaeological sites. We, one of the main things is to coordinate and cooperate for cost effectiveness and compatibility with neighboring communities. And we want to utilize transportation strategies to reduce congestion and automobile reliance. Next. Another goal is to utilize a community design approach that includes the integration of all income and age groups, mixed land use, compact development and town center redevelopment. To me, this is one of the key parts of this piece of legislation. And it's really about thinking about how do we create housing on Shelter Island that fits appropriately with our town and with the goals we have coming up. In talking about, you know, potential revitalization of the town center, I think that this is an important piece that kind of fits in with that. We want to seek efficiency and consistency in building and land use, which is to say, we want to have something that fits into the fabric of Shelter Island, does not stand out in a way that may not be agreeable with people on the island. And we want to utilize a community based and collaborative process in planning and implementation. So the role of the advisory board, it's supposed to be a good spread of community members. But one of the big parts of that is we're really trying to think about having that diverse representation also effectively being a good way to communicate with the many different aspects of our local population. So I, I, you know, I think that this is really one of the keys here is just thinking about how, how we get many different opinions involved in this to make it something that's going to work for Shelter Island as a whole. Next. Tools and strategies. So there are some things that we already have in the community housing law that is on the Shelter Island books that tie into this. But I think it's important that in thinking about ways to move forward, that we think about ways to develop accessory dwelling units in existing neighborhoods. This provides a great opportunity also for private development of affordable housing that the town does not need to be involved in. And we want to link community housing to other forms of development, new subdivisions and mixed use development in the center. Adopt innovative financing strategies, utilize buyback agreements to retain affordable units and pursue housing development on town owned land. I think the part on the buyback agreements is a really important thing. And we're doing a lot of legwork here and trying to figure out what some of the other East End towns do to make sure that properties remain affordable. As you all know, that's one of the major critiques of what happened about it road, which I definitely think is a successful project. But it is important to think about, how do we make sure if we're going to put the time and effort and resources into creating a housing for people that live here to ensure that it remains attainable housing going forward into the future. Next. Okay. So just want to say where this is, we have a couple projects that are in the works that the town board certainly knows about, but maybe some folks here are not as familiar with. I do want to first preface this with the design concepts here are very much in progress. And we have not opened it up to public discussion or anything like that. So this is very much like conceptual phase with a lot, a lot to go. So what you see here is not like the plan of this is definitely happening, but some ideas of what is possible. So on Manwearing Road, we're working on a project for homes for sale. We're hoping to be able to build four homes to sell at an affordable price. One of the key pieces of this deal is making sure that the town maintains ownership of the land and provides a long-term lease of the land to the people that own the homes. So essentially you are purchasing the prop, the house, the improvement that is on the property while the town maintains ownership of the land. Basically, if you take out the price of the land from the equation, you're saving a lot of money. Land costs on Shelter Island is prohibitively expensive. And when you take that out, it makes it so that it is not prohibitively expensive. And I think it is important in any consideration of this, trying to figure out an appropriate buyback provision, making sure that the town has first right of refusal and kind of thinking about other approaches to ensuring long-term affordability of these properties. Next. Oh, yes.
Do we have to wait for the community?
Definitely not. So on this project and the next project that will be up are things that we have been working on that are, I don't want to say unrelated, but are, they are allowable not because of this law, but because they are something that we can indeed do. Yeah. Next. And so this is a basic concept for one of the homes on this property. Next. So then the next project is 12 South Ferry Road, the property that is next door to the Haven's House. And this is units for rent. We are hoping to be able to create 16 rental units on this property. And this is a small community of apartments that's planned around a shared green space. Town maintains ownership of the land and there is a set rental rate to ensure long-term affordability. So both town ownership of the property and stipulations about rental rates are the key in this one. Again, just want to reiterate that this is a, you know, this is a concept design here. This is not anything that's set and shown. And next. So basically the big thing that I want to point out, this kind of ties into what you asked Maria. So these two projects are feasible right now because we own this land and we don't have covenants on them that prevent us from doing anything there. Most of the town land, most of the land that the town owns is protected by the community preservation fund and is not developable. And there is some other land that is not protected in the same way, but is not appropriate for other reasons. So I think one of the big things in considering, so we have these two projects in the works and they are very attainable for the future right now. I think the key for the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Act is that it raises funds to create more opportunities like this for islanders. Because as stands, we, you know, we do these two projects and we're basically out of the land that we can develop, that we can build housing on. And the iconic Bay Region Community Housing Act just opens the door for more of this. And I think it's important to just keep in mind that as time goes on, this is only going to become a more expensive place. The price of real estate and rent is going to go up. And we, this is, this is a long-term problem that we are going to have, going to have to address. Next. So just want to say thank you to Jerry and Amber. We've been working very closely with them on this. So I'm Chris Diorio and the chair of the community housing board. Then we have Fran and Maria who are here as members of the housing board. And Liz and Michael have both been working extensively on this. Michael is the architect that has been working on this. And Peter McCracken and Paul are both community housing members as well.
And they're here by Zoom.
Right. And they're here by Zoom. And that's our presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. I just wanted to mention that these two plans that Chris just briefly touched on, we feel are very doable and we can get them started and going. And I think the key is we can show the public that we can do this. And once we get these done and then we're then when this money kicks in, then we can start some kind of community trust fund. And either we buy land to do other ones or we use the money. As Chris mentioned, there's a lot of options we can use the money for. But I think we need to show the public that we can do these projects. We can get started once for homeownership. And again, we learned a lot from Bautic Road. Bautic Road was a tremendously successful project. The one rub was always, well, they didn't stay affordable. Well, they kept families there for 25 plus years. And there are ways that we can, you know, keep affordable for the future. They're speaking with people in East Hampton. You can limit the improvements people can put on the houses so they stay affordable. You know, you can, you know, there's things we can do to make sure. You always want people to have equity in their homes. That's, you know, part of being a homeowner. But we can limit that equity so that it stays in the affordable range. So I, I think again, I think you all know that the town board's priorities are housing and water. And we're going to be moving, you know, forward on this. I don't know if anybody else on the committee wants to say anything. Maria, come on up. Just identify yourself.
Oh, Maria Magent. Hi. So I would just like to say that as we know that we will probably be dealing with a long-term issue around affordable housing. I would just like the town board to make it public that there's a long-term commitment to dealing with affordable housing. And because this thing is a referendum in November of 22, right? I think that if we can fast track man wearing and the other, the other street, the other project, I think that would be to our benefit because we are going to have to go and canvas people and say, you please vote yes on this referendum. Now, again, the referendum is that tiny little tax, which is a property tax, but it does include everything that's in that law. So I feel like part of our challenge and part of what we really want to commit ourselves to is making sure we've created enough grassroots community support for what we really want to do. And as you said, having something already in process, I think will really make people feel like, yeah, I'm down with this. This is going to
Traditionally Shelter Island has always led the East End in supporting the 2% transfer tax and the, the second part of it, the 20% of the 2% for water quality.
Right.
I think we were 70 plus percent approved approval. When this first came about, I approached Fred Deal and said, Fred, maybe we should fast track the referendum and not wait till November because, you know, we've already lost, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And, you know, maybe we should do a special referendum for this. And Fred's feeling was when you do that, you know, you might attract the naysayers more than the the positive votes. So let's, you know, gear to it, even though we're going to lose a year's worth of income.
Right.
Let's, you know, do it right. Do what we're doing with our projects that we are doing and, you know, get the public on board and, you know, promote the legislation and get it passed.
I think that's all I'm thinking about. Okay.
Thank you. Elizabeth.
Hi, I'm Liz Hanley. I'm, I just wanted to, one of the things that Chris was talking about with the land, that that's definitely like a big issue for us. And just in our, we've got with Curtis from Southampton Housing. He's amazing, such a wealth of information. And one of the things that he brought up that I thought was really fascinating was the 72H Suffolk County Transfer thing. So I'm like kind of a legislation tax nerd. So I like dug into it. And basically there is a rule on the books that we don't even have to do anything. That if there is any land or property that is basically they don't pay their property taxes and can be seized instead of putting it up for auction, the municipality, the town, us, can take it at no cost if they are going to develop it for community housing. So I don't know when the, it rolls over. I'm assuming calendar year, but I think it would be a great idea to take a look at those rules. Because even if we're like waiting for the funding to come through with this legislation, if we had some property back that we knew we could develop, especially since that is like our the thing that we need the most. I think that this could be really helpful and just like, I mean, free land.
Liz, yeah. I spoke to Sydney Joyner at Real Property Tax Services.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he said, no. He said that what the deal is, you can, you can, the town has the right to buy it at the auction price. And whatever it sold at, at auction, the town can then just take it away for that price from the winning bidder.
Interesting. Curtis actually said a different thing and they're actually building. Interesting. Uh, Curtis actually said a different thing and they're actually building right now. Uh, with Habitat for Humanity on property that they, they got through the transfer.
For free.
Yeah. So like, I have questions. I actually reached out to Curtis and, and I was like, how did that work? Because they're building right now, uh, five houses. They just broke ground earlier last week with Habitat for Humanity on land that they got through that. So I think it would just be worth looking into, even if that was like a possibility. Or even if we could just get it at a really good price.
Right, right.
Right? Just because, especially if the rolls are coming up at the end of the calendar year.
It's very rare that anything actually goes to auction.
Usually gets rejected.
Usually you see it advertised and it's going to go with it. Yeah, it was, but it was a road. It wasn't, it wasn't public. It was a street. And they, and they called us, do you want this street? We said, no, we don't want it.
Yeah, but anyway, just keeping an eye on that. I thought that.
No, and those are the kind of things we need to know about.
Yeah, so.
If there's any options.
That would be.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so I, oh, anybody on Zoom? Okay, sure.
You have to come up to the mic.
I'm Kelsey. Um, for advertising or campaigning for yes on the referendum. I'm not sure if the town can be like, hey, vote yes. Or if we need to, we obviously need to campaign for ourselves, but I'm not sure if the town campaigns itself.
I think the town can do, uh, informational meetings. We can't tell you to vote.
Okay.
Yeah. What, the one thing that you can be reminded of is that the candidates that ran.
Mm-hmm.
All ran on the premise that they wanted to support community housing.
Yep.
So, and the people that were elected well before that also support community housing. So I think the current board and the future board have five people here committed to community housing.
Great, okay.
That, that said, that these are generally done as what they call permissive referendum.
Okay.
Which means the town board has to vote on it first. So it'll be pretty clear where they stand.
Okay.
Oh.
And how many days before the election is, does that happen?
Yeah.
Except the referendum, so quite, quite a ways before.
Okay, yeah, in talking with Fred Seal, I think we have to have our piece done and voted on by like August.
And then once that's voted on, can then, I'm not sure, people can put signs in their lungs, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Before, is that before or after you guys vote on it?
Could be both.
They can do it signs anytime they want, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, when, when the original 2%, when the original 2% transfer tax, I mean, we had, you know, numerous meetings. That's when we had the town hall meetings in Justice Hall. And, you know, the Long Island Builders Association came and made presentations and, you know, different groups made presentations. And we just, you know, listened and observed and, you know, it was just for the public to hear.
Okay.
A couple of quick comments. First of all, great presentation. Did a nice, very, very nice job. That's the second comment I have, I think, judging from everybody in the room and the, and the town board present and future. Uh, we're excited. I mean, this is, this, I don't want to say it's about time, but it is about time. You know, uh, and, and, and I think getting the wheels in motion as, as soon as we possibly can to show some successes. And that we are in fact committed as a community to do this is, is huge. I think the one stumbling block, and I'm gonna, having been the president now, the my 12th year of the Silver Beach Association and working with that. 200 plus homeowners that are down there. I think a lot of people are very sympathetic to the community housing issue. And they're all gonna, the biggest stumbling block, I think in the near shore areas, you're going to get, of course, is the water issues, that, that kind of thing. So I think if we're looking for support and, and there are a lot of people that, that will be voting in the near shore areas. We have to come up with some carefully worded, um, plan on, on, you know, we do have existing buildings. We do have accessory buildings within the near shore area. Again, we'd have to change some things. But I think people in those areas are, are, I don't want to say they're panicking, but they're very concerned. Extremely concerned about water septic and, you know, and salt intrusion and, and things of that nature. It's a real concern because it's impacted so many people in that, and I'll say in the Silver Beach area. Uh, the biggest impact of all was nature. You know, Irene and Sandy have created more havoc than anything else. So it's just something that we, I think we have to be sensitive to. We have to learn how to address if we want to win that, those people over. I think the center of town, uh, you know, hopefully we'll work on this nitrogen problem and, and, and solve that issue. It, you know, concurrently as we're, we're developing this, I think they'll be more supportive. But if, we need to get everybody on board. There's, there's no doubt about it. The future of this island is at stake. And, um, and for all the reasons, see, we, you know, not, we didn't even touch upon why, why it's important. To have, uh, you know, a more diverse population to take care of the needs of young people. And older people are looking to downsize and everything else. It's, if we want to remain a community and we want to have all these things that we have enjoyed for so many years. We need, we need to be, we need to come together and, and, and come up. And your plan right here is a great, great beginning. So I'm excited about working together with you guys to try to promote this. You know, prior to the, you know, prior to voting on this. Because there are a lot of people that are, you know, that's set against it, that had voiced that concern to me. We need to, we need to address them.
We, you need to come up to the, um, yeah, that way the people on Zoom can hear.
Um, don't we also have a water committee?
Water advisory council.
Yeah, so they should be in on having this conversation with us so they can work on some of the specifics too.
Right.
That was all.
Yeah.
And we also have a, uh, you know, our town engineer, I mean, Joe Fornara.
Right.
He's on, I mean, the guy has been a blessing. He's really on top of all of this. So he, he understands the need that the, that what the town board is looking for. And he too is addressing those water issues with the WAC, so.
Yeah, because that, that'll be an important component.
It will be.
Our package really to everybody, right?
It will be.
Chris, probably, probably, Chris, probably something, uh, that the committee should discuss. I don't know, would be part of the plan or, or part of, Kelsey, part of the sale, uh, going forward is, is getting the, either the Shelter Island Association or the, the various, uh, you know, uh, homeowners groups, you know, instead of the NIMBY, let's go with the YIMBY. You know, you know, well, you know, how can we, what can you do in your area to help us? You know, how, what are your, you know, proposals we can do with, you know, different sections?
Um, so when I was here, hearing you talk about your area and people pro or con.
Right.
And considering the fact that we're going to do smart growth, we're not going to be doing a project way out in Silver Beach. It doesn't make sense, right? Because of transportation and all those things. So for those people who may not be, um, in an area where a more concentrated growth, can we do some more educational outreach to them for the accessory units? Uh, does the town have like an info packet for people to access if they really want to explore? What does it take to put an accessory unit in my property? And it's also a stealthy way to increase those, you know, the housing on the island. I mean, it doesn't have to be obvious.
Part of it, Virginia is, uh, accessory dwellings aren't allowed in the near shore of the Lake District. Silver Beach is, so that's something Chris and I had discussed that maybe we need to address that. And see if there's some ways we can, uh, deal with that.
But some of us are grandfathered in. I mean, I have, you know.
Yeah.
And, and so in the near shore overlay district, that would mostly have to do with the water usage.
Mm-hmm.
And when we look at what people are building in the near shore.
Right.
And to allow existing homeowners to have some flexibility to add one bathroom.
Right.
You know, where.
Right.
New houses.
Yes.
I think that would really help increase that availability and, and that would all really address the issue for single people.
Yes.
But you made, you made, you made a great point there in terms of, uh, you know, where, where the planning of, you know, careful planning and what's going to go into this and where, where you're going to concentrate. You know, s- some of the, some of the bigger projects, perhaps, you know, towards, more towards the center of town. So you don't have that, but I'm, I'm always of the belief that all areas of the community need to be part of the solution. Even if it's a smaller part of the solution, we all need to be committed to that end. So what can we do as a Silver Beach community in terms of, again, not a massive project down there. But just by, by freeing up a few, you know, a few properties that may, you know, just have seasonable people around that that might be able to do that. You know, that are not located right smack dab on the water that, you know, there, there's ways of doing it. But the name of the game is careful planning, you know, and, and keeping everything in perspective.
Thank you.
Chris, I have a question for you.
Uh, Can I just really quick just address what you were talking about, Jim? So just to be clear, it is actually in the charge of this law to consider environmental impact, right? So that is like in developing the advisory board that is going to develop the housing plan, which the town board has to approve. Right? That is one of the, that is very clearly part of what, what is the charge.
Yes.
Um, and so I, you know, I think that that's whatever, that is top of the list of considerations is how this is going to affect water.
Yeah, that's going to be part of the intentional piece that you just talked about to prevent that panic.
No, totally.
Initial panic coming out of.
I think that, I think that that's, and because of that sort of, right? It's obvious that that's going to be one of the main sort of anti-housing arguments is that that. Yeah, I want to be very clear about that's like top of the list of priorities.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah.
One thing, Chris, and, uh, so the question was, I mentioned earlier. It's what, you guys are going to be the, the lead committee on this. It doesn't mean you can't reach out to the other committees. If they have an expertise that you want, if you have water or it could be wetness here.
Yeah.
Whoever it happens to be.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Chris, did I misinterpret or is your board just going to morph into the new board?
Uh, I would say this is ultimately, that's up to the town board to decide.
What do you feel?
Um, my personal opinion is we probably have to talk about it a bit more.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, you know, basically it seems like the law calls for the creation of the advisory board to come up with the housing plan.
Right.
And that is the charge of the advisory board. The charge of the advisory board isn't really to, um, keep the plan going, so to speak. There are some stipulations in the law about how there's like some, some parts of there's supposed to be like a re-review, I think every five years or something like that. Um, it doesn't actually, I believe, and I may be wrong on this, but I believe it does not actually explicitly say that that is an advisory board charge. I think that is, um, something that the town board is beholden to, though I think that obviously that should be done together with, um, whatever housing entity we have.
Yeah. Um, well, can we call them both, Bob? Can we just say the community housing board slash advisory board?
Yeah, there's no reason. I think the question, there's no reason someone can't serve on both.
Yeah, but it seems redundant. I'd like to have one board.
I, yeah, I mean, I, so I would, I would, the one thing I would say though is that maybe for, um, right, for getting the initial, um, plan done where we're really trying to get like good community inputs. Right? That board can range, um, seven to 15 people, right? I would like to see it maybe on the higher end of that number to get the best representation. Um, I would say from a practical standpoint, once the housing plan is in effect. That having a housery, housing board of that size is maybe a bit excessive. Logistically complicated, um, and is maybe not the best approach.
Right, I'm not sure you're going to find that many people to volunteer though.
Yeah, I mean.
It'll be a, you know.
Right, I think it'll be a lot easier to get, um, that many people to volunteer for a few month process of creating the housing plan. Whereas getting 15 people to do every, you know, every single month perpetually being part of the housing board or something like that, I think that that's a tougher sell. Um, I mean, we, and we, with the housing board historically, we went, we were five, then we went to seven, then we went back to five because we were never able to have a quorum. Um, I do, I would like to think that if we start creating housing in a real way. That people's commitment to that may feel different.
Yeah.
Um, you know, to be honest, it's been like hard to stick with it, uh, as a member of the housing board. Feeling like for a long time, nothing was really happening.
Mm-hmm. Um. So how do we get this board formed so that we can get the plan?
Um, well, I think, I, you know, I guess, um, my personal opinion is that we should be trying to, you know, whatever. It's December now, we're about to come to a period of time where it's hard to really do very much. I would personally like to see, um, beginning of January, really trying to lock down and starting to do interviews for who can be members of the advisory board. Um, I think that that is.
Let's just start with an ad.
Um, yeah, um, definitely. I don't know how that stuff works as far as like once a night happens, what the timeframe is, it's like a 30-day deal or something like that. I don't, I, I have no idea. Um, but that we just want to consider, want to make sure we don't like do the ad and then have it be that there's a two-week period where no one's going to be doing anything like this. And then we have a shorter period of time for trying to lock in those people. Um, but, um, yeah, I mean, to me, getting the, the advisory board together is key. Um, I see that as, uh, you know, to me, that should be number one priority beginning of January. Um, I.
It's twofold, BG. I think, uh, we put the ad in the, uh, paper. And both the town board and the housing committee, uh, solicit people to.
Yes.
Apply to, you know.
Yeah.
Based on some of the skill levels that we're looking for to, to comprise that.
Yeah.
And the diversity of, of, of people too.
Yeah, and I, and I do want to also say that just as stands with the housing board right now. I mean, if we want to think about housing board members as housing advocates, right? So we have that, we already have a section or of that board, um, people interested in that. And, um.
It's up to 15. We don't have.
Right. No, 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 definitely. Um, and also I want to point out, um, Paul Cucarulo is, um, involved in banking financing relating to real estate. And Peter McCracken is our real estate whiz.
Right.
Um, so, you know, we do not have a member of the construction industry.
Right.
Um, and, and both, uh, Reed Karen and Brett Poltrick said they would, uh.
Yeah.
Be interested in helping us.
And I, yeah, there's, whatever, there's a lot to think about in forming the advisory board. Um, Michael had made a good point that really if we could find, you know, for the building industry, it'd be really nice if we could find someone that has both. Um, like construction experience, but also maybe like a builder developer.
Yeah.
Type stance where they're also familiar with the financing.
Right.
Um, side of things, certainly not a necessity. Um, I think Brett is a really great example of someone who maybe doesn't have experience on that side. But is essentially been a pretty affordable builder, um, which is a key component of making something like this affordable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one nice thing about going with Reed or Brett is they won't conflict themselves out of actually doing the work when it comes to it.
Right.
Yeah. Chris, is, is there a part in this legislation, respective legislation? That they recommend creating a financial board to review expenses or make recommendations to the down board?
Um, I, there is not something explicitly about that.
Like the WQI, the water quality improvement, we established the board, the town established the board to make recommendations of the town board of what to finance.
Um, so there's not anything like that. It does address, um.
That could be in your plan.
Right, so I think, right, so basically.
Could be a, a, a good thing.
Yeah, so that I, I would say that that is a charge within the housing plan to figure that out. Um, and it does pretty explicitly say though that the town board ultimately is in charge of managing that fund.
Well, it's the same as the WQI, Chris, you know, it's the absolute 20% of the 2% fund for water quality. The WQI board makes the recommendations to the town board how to spend that money.
Yep.
So it could be the same type of thing.
It shows an added level of responsibility and.
Right, um, and I think that, you know, just in.
You know, I think it's a good thing.
Just in thinking about this now, um, it may also be something, that may be a specific aspect of, in terms of the question of like, what does this look like going forward? Do we need the advisory board and the housing board? Right? We, we obviously need someone that is thinking about how we're managing these funds if this referendum is to pass.
Um, there's some of that already in the legislation with regard to the advisory board. As far as devising the town board.
Well, I think we had somebody with a hand up back here, no?
Peter.
You have to come up to the mic.
Come on.
Otherwise you won't get heard.
I have a few questions too, but, uh, that, I'm Jimmy.
That 2% is, so because we haven't voted on that yet, is that not collected? Or what happens to that?
No, the 2%, 2% is the.
I, I'm sorry, I, I meant to have, yeah.
That's in place. The half percent is not being collected yet. Had it been in place when the legislation, legislated and the, uh, state senate approved, when the assembly in the state senate approved it. It would have been 30 million in the, uh, plus.
For the east end.
For the five east end towns.
Yeah.
No, it's not in place yet.
I mean, I'm, I, I'm obviously there's pros and cons to basically everything, but um, you know, to fast track it. I, I mean, I'm not suggesting to do that, but this is a unique year in real estate. I mean, I don't think we're going to have another one like this for a long time. Inflation is rising.
Yeah.
Um, everyone who sat on properties for years and put a big number on it.
Yeah.
Finally got it in the past 18 months, people just knocked on their door and said, I, I want your house, I'd want to be able to see the water from there, like, I mean, it's super unique. So there's absolutely zero way. You know, there's, there's.
Again, I.
And who pays a half, who pays a half percent?
The buyer.
Is it the buyer, the buyer, okay.
Yeah, but and, and also just so everybody understands, they, they raised the threshold. So it's not like the buyer's paying more.
Sure.
You know, you know, they're paying, the, the 2% kicks in at a higher rate.
Sure, that was 400,000, right, and anything 2 million or less, anything 2 million over.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the difference?
So Jim, I was, I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, it's, yeah.
I mean, I was thinking the same way you were, let's, let's jump on this.
All right, so I just, I mean, uh, there's, there's absolutely no.
Quite honestly, I mean, Amber pulled me back and so did Brett Thiel when they said, you know, let's walk.
I, I absolutely understand that, I'm not, I wouldn't suggest that, but it's a super unique year that's probably never going to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Julie.
Yes, great.
So Julie Brennan, Shelter Island Gazette. So my question, and it might be to you guys, or it might be to you guys, is it seems like the, the bill that was passed includes a lot of language that either you could do now or you can do after you have enabled the half a percent fund. You have to have a vote in order to establish that fund. Do you have to have a vote in order to incorporate all of the other aspects?
I think the intent is we have to have everything in place before the vote.
That was my second question.
It, it depends on what particular thing you're figuring out. For example, I think forming the committee, preparing the plan, those types of things, you can certainly do beforehand. You'd be important, you just, you don't have the ability to collect any money.
Right. So it wasn't clear to me in reading it, whether you must have those things in place before the vote or not. I think you have to have those things in place before you can spend the money.
During the presentation, and I may be wrong, that when you did make your presentation, that you are allowed to do some of these things beforehand, you just can't, you're just not collecting them.
One, one of the really significant things of value that we're allowed to do is to create a housing plan. And within a housing plan, we can come up with really compelling strategies in order to accomplish housing on, on the island. We could then go ahead and build housing if we have the asset of available land. Because the land is the most expensive component in the whole equation right now. But the sort of uh, trigger point to expending any money from the transfer tax is twofold. One is you have to have a plan, which has been developed in a manner that was described and with smart growth initiatives and with community input and collaboration. And the second component is um, that you have to have that referendum pass before funds can be expended.
Right.
But all the things that we're contemplating doing in preparation for that are valuable assets to the community. I would really emphasize how valuable the, the housing plan is toward that end.
Right.
Excuse my cold.
Thank you. Thank you.
To follow up on that a little bit, just, just wanted to remind everybody what the supervisor said earlier, that the construction part of this um, of the two projects we're talking about really doesn't have anything to do with the, this legislation, we can proceed with that notwithstanding. With the legislation is really just about the, the funding process. And we could, you know, as far as the plan goes and the uh, we could do that either before or after legally, and you know, there's no particular reason not to do it before.
Um, so Julia, I, 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 I'm going to address that. And I would say, so, right, you don't need the advisory board or the housing plan for the referendum to happen. You have to have those in place if the referendum passes to be able to get that money. That being said, in terms of presenting to the public a plan for this referendum, um, it's important that we can say, hey, this is what the vision for housing is. Um, it's going to be tough to convince anyone that they should vote yes on this if we don't have something like that in place. Um, I would also say the other point to consider is this may not pass in referendum, but it is still important that we re-envision the future of housing on Shelter Island regardless. If this referendum, if this does not pass in referendum, the things that this law allows for are still important things for um, maintaining our community on the island. And I think that um, what it allows is a number of things that we need to consider, figuring out how to do even if we don't get this money. Um, and I think uh, just one sort of added bit to that is generally speaking, if you build housing either for sale or for rent and do it in a good way, there's a possibility to make some money off of that. And that that money can go into building more housing. So I think that we have the ability to still create a sort of fund, even if we don't have this transfer tax where, and certainly it would be a lot easier if we had the half percent, no doubt about it. Um, but there is still possibility for money to come in in different ways. There's also a number of like state and county funding methods, federal funding. And um, there's access to money in different ways that we should think about approaching all of those types of ways in general, um, but especially if this doesn't pass. And just as a um, setting ourselves up for like what is possible, how do we do these things? Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. We really appreciate uh.
Guys did a great job.
Effort you're putting into this and we will continue going forward. We did have the test on it uh, all highway building, we should have those back by uh, mid-December, they said. So hopefully we'll uh, know. And actually uh, some, I guess you could call it good news, semi-good news. And talking with Curtis, if in fact there are brownfields at the land, that's a good thing because there's even more money to take care of those things for housing, so.
Overlining.
So, so thank you all very much. Give it a. Okay. One and a half minute. Yeah.
Can we take a two minute?
Yeah.
Oh, we got to.
Just two minutes. We'll do it.
Around the table.
We have to do a.
All right.
Board member reports first. Wait till everybody uh. Hey, Chris, hey Chris, take it outside, will you? Chris?
Do the gamble. Get their attention. The meeting's not over. The meeting's not over.
Sharon, Sharon.
Uh, she just.
Okay, that, that's really all for the agenda today. We're going to go around board member reports and then we're going to uh, go into executive session because we have interviews for the uh, police sergeant job. Uh, Sergeant Legrady is retiring, so we're going to be interviewing. So we'll start with board member reports. Albert, you have anything for us?
I don't have it.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of things. Um, we've had meetings this week and last week about ADP and we're going to be upgrading our, this is more internal town related, but we're going to be upgrading our time entry system in 2022. Um, so employees will be, instead of using those green time cards, we'll be upgrading to a more sophisticated system. And we may have to. Um, some.
Good.
At highway and some time card, so it'll be depending on, and some will be phone. So it'll depend on who's doing what, um, how they will access it. Um, we may need to um, find another $5,000 in the budget for that. Knew you'd like that one. Um, I took an um, Office of State Comptroller webinar last week. And one of the things that I learned there is we need to adopt a fund balance policy. We kind of have one, a loose one that we've been operating by over the past, you know, four or five years, but we need to um, solidify it, so um, that's something that we need to work on this year. And I have a feeling I know who will be working on that. And then IT, um, we're uh, reworking our contract with East End Computers um, because of the addition of Kevin is our internal IT person. But, and we should have a contract um, by year end to go forward into 2022. So we'll need to adopt that before year end. And that's it.
Good, thank you. Jim? Yeah, uh, CAC, uh, you asked Judy S. for a, an update. We, we currently have five members, we should have seven. Uh, we are looking basically to, for a sixth person. Uh, we had Dan Berger in mind, but his father passed away a week and a half ago, so we're waiting probably till after the holiday to ask him to come into it for an interview. But we're fine with moving forward with the five. And if uh, if, if we happen to get Dan on board, we might even look for a seventh person. The WMAC has every position filled, all seven positions filled. The deer and tick committee was originally a committee of seven. It is a committee of five with Jim Bevulacqua as the chairperson and Scott Campbell and Julia Weisenberg, Dr. Josh Potter, who's brand new. And um, and the TNC, the fifth person would be, the TNC was going to try to replace Alex Navarro. So that should be the fifth person. We're comfortable with those five, you gotta remember Bo Payne and I are both pretty experienced with the committee, so you know, there's, there's a lot of knowledge and expertise there anyhow. Recreation committee, we were a committee of seven, we are currently a committee of five. Um, we, we, we're fine with that, again, for the same reasons. Because uh, we have Bethany and Emily that attend all our meetings, so we not only have five committee members, we have two people from the recreation department plus an ex athletic director, so we, we're pretty, pretty, pretty good in, in terms of keeping it five. Uh, second report.
Should we reduce that officially so you always have a quorum or no?
Well, we, 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 yeah, that's.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, so I, I, I would propose that the recreation committee um, go to five. The daring tick committee uh, has really only got four current members. So I, I think we're trying to go to five and with the idea that um, Alex Navarro's position from the TNC would be replaced. And if we don't, the DNC decides not to do that, that we need a, we need a fifth person. But I, I, you know, I think we, we, we'd fine with five there. WMAC stays at seven, CAC um, currently is at five. And that's a, that's a problem in terms of getting, you know, because, you know, John Riley oftentimes is not present, so therefore we, we end up with uh, really just uh, Mark and Howard, Pedar and Paulette, so it's just the four of them. So that's. Time to address that, it's been going on for. I have tried, I, I have talked to the chairman about that, you know, he's going to try to make this, the, in fairness to John. A policy in place on it. Yeah, we do, we, 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 we do.
And you can zoom in, right?
Yeah, and, and you can zoom in, yes. Plus the fact that that committee meets at 7:30 at night. You know, so it's a little bit more.
With regard to these uh, advisory committees, as they're not, as they are advisory and I'm not specifically voting on much, there's not particularly a reason why we couldn't do the resolution instead of saying five members or six members. Just say at least five members.
Okay. Okay.
The quorum being defined as 50% plus one, that way if you put seven members on it, your quorum's already defined.
Yeah, that's, that would be great.
50% plus one of the members now serving.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah, that way, that way if you, if you make it bigger or smaller, it kind of self-adjusts.
Right, okay.
And Jim's so.
Since you're going over vacancies, there is a vacancy on the EMS advisory board.
Okay.
Because uh, Doug Matts had a departure. And then once the election results are finalized, we may have an opening on the planning board. We're, we're expected to, but anyways, um, so just if we're getting the word out there on potential, we'll make sure they.
You okay now with, with all the uh, committees with, you don't have any vacancies, right?
CBF is seven, oh, WHC's a five.
Okay.
You know, the quorum, that's fine.
Okay. I like that wording though, Bob, it gives us a little bit of freedom.
Flexibility.
Yeah.
Good point.
And, and the other thing is, I think most committee member, chairpeople that I hear from are not concerned with the number, it's the quality of the number. You know, so that if they can find a good sixth person or a qualified seventh person that's really energetic and bring something to the table, then they're, but just to have an extra body in there is not, is not what we're looking for.
Reed obviously wanted to bring another person on board.
Yeah.
An energy expert.
Yeah.
That Tim had spoken to. Come on board with that committee.
Uh, this is in the Article 16, is this where it would go to change the definition of quorum? Where would it go? Well, you know what?
Generally, those are generally just done by resolution, the committee sizes.
Okay.
Although we can uh.
But I like the new definition of quorum, that's kind of different and would apply to all of them.
And I think that's what's already in 16.
Okay.
Is it?
Or, I know it's in the committee mag, I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. I just was wondering, how do we make that?
I'll send you copy of the committee.
All right, I need to, I need to get through these reports, but I've got a bunch of them. Um, the Pep local government canceled their uh, quarterly meeting. I wanted to read just a couple lines from them. As you may have heard, the iconic estuary partnership as a national estuary program is included in the recent federal infrastructure bill. The program office is taking careful time to accept, to assess our priorities over the next five years. And we look to reschedule this meeting at the end of January 2022, when we, when we are prepared to discuss this and align the town objectives, which we are one of, with future implementation of our watershed. So something that, you know, there's monies available out there through Pep that uh, we need to be, we need to be cognizant of. Last night the WMAC met, we had five applications we went through. Actually, four applications, Dottie clarified for me, the Cola mooring permit uh, has already been approved because he was within the grid. But we did take care of the Mangle, the uh, Pascarelli, the Pinto and the uh, Weisenberg mooring applications, they all passed. We also took a look at the Slaughter Beck dock proposal, which has not been formalized yet, but uh, Rob Herman was on thing and in order to go forward with it, he wanted to feel the town board out, uh, excuse me, the committee out, the WMAC, because they're going to limit the dock to 100 feet and they went over it. And he actually satisfied the needs of all six members that were present last night at the meet, or five members that were present last night at the meeting. So yes, so we've given Rob Herman the go-ahead to, to, to look at that. So tho- those were all approved. In terms of deer and tick, uh, again, Dr. Potter was back in. Hunting this year so far, uh, we have, we have harvested 82 deer this year compared to 62 last year. So we're plus 20. And that ended November 29th, those numbers. Of gift, we've had four raffles totaling $450 worth of gift cards. We are no longer doing tick drags in Machamak, even though Bo Payne is doing one voluntarily at Machamak Point, because that's our control point. It used to be North Haven, but now North Haven is using that, so we use Machamak Point. Uh, Dr. Julia Weisenberg is working on a preventative approach. She's written several articles for the paper and social media, uh, doing a nice job there. We actually even got on a Japanese TV station with uh, our deer and tick, supplied the pictures. And uh, and, and, and we were actually on Japanese television. Shelter Island was uh, doing a story on our deer and tick committee. Recreational harvest group, uh, so far in the cooler, we've had 53 deer this year, 50 last year. 28 we use for personal use, which is about normal. Good news is the, the meat that's put in the locker down at the recycling center. Last year we had, at this point, 270 pounds placed in there, this year 600 pounds. Reason for that, we're taking larger deer, we've harvested larger deer. Uh, some of that meat, by the way, is going to food insecure uh, programs for school and family. Bo uh, does a very low prior, profile thing and makes sure that he does get the meat in the hands of certain people on the island that really need it, so it never makes it really to the recycling center. It is going to selected families that really are food dependent and insecure. There are spending, recent reports from hunters spending more times in the woods, seeing less deer, which is a good thing, and hopefully that will be reflected in the flyover that we do in late January. Uh, New York states allows for an unlimited number of endless years, maximum two, two bucks. And that's about it from the guarantee committee, uh, doing a good job, they're right on top of everything. In terms of capital planning and grants committee, we met this morning. Uh, we didn't go in over really too much with the feasibility studies because uh, we will. uh, we will be able to report much better in January because a lot of that data, especially from Fresh Pond, especially from the, um, center, um, feasibility study on the municipal wastewater treatment study. That information won't be getting into our hands till late December, early January. So I'll fill you in at that point. At Crescent Beach, you'll be happy to know, uh, that the bathroom trailer has been ordered. Uh, the date of production, they were, again, it requires like four or five months to produce this thing. We definitely hope to have it in place by Memorial Day, Jim. Chief Reed by, uh, twenty twenty-two on Memorial Day. Um, the concrete work, um, is being worked on as we speak. Uh, you know, not down there, but we're, we're, we're trying to get that in place. Uh, everything seems to be covered in the grant. Uh, we're, we're currently working on building of the pavilion, uh, looking into that aspect of the project as well. So I'm hope, pretty confident that, uh, the Crescent Beach bathroom will materialize with the pavilion with ADA compliance by Memorial Day twenty twenty-two. Uh, multi-cap, capital plan is a progress and, uh, work in progress. As Amber said this morning, we did extract enough of our, in our multi-year capital plan to be able to, include some of those things in our twenty twenty-two budget, which is, uh, our, our main concern. The roof at the recycling center for the people that have been down there, the structure is pretty much finished except for two things. The roof, which will, was starting to be worked on as we speak and, um, the asphalting of, but I wanted to say, as you come through the gate, that asphalt area is going to be re-grated. So it's going to be enlarged so that the grading is proper at, at the recycling center. But I'm, I'm pretty confident that hopefully by another month or so down the road, uh, less the holiday season here, by the end of January, we will have a roof over our recycling equipment. The one thing that we'll be working on as a grants committee is trying to find funding to get solar panels for next, next year. We would be working on that aspect of it. Shelter Island Community Center, again, only got one bid back there. So he's reached out, reached out. People are not interested. They don't have enough people, uh, to, to take on this job. So we may in fact be going with that one bidder, um, you know, on, on that. Two thirds of the work is going to be done outside the town. About one third of the project is being done in-house. That's how it breaks out. But I'm, again, pretty confident that if the weather holds it, it's all weather related, that we can get that job done. In terms of our eight major accomplishments for twenty twenty-one.
We hold that off till next week?
Okay.
Have interviews coming.
Okay. I was going to be finished in two minutes, but. Okay. No, I don't mind. Okay.
BJ, do you have anything?
You come, they are coming in at two fifteen?
No, I was supposed to come in at two.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay. Okay. All right.
All right. Bob, did you have anything for us?
Um, oh, I can wait till after the.
Okay. Julie, you have anything for us? I'm going to guess that's a no. Okay. I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session.
For interviews.
For interviews.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody.